Welcome everybody, I'm councillor Mazza Igbal and welcome to our extraordinary meeting of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. The meeting today is open to the public and is being webcast. On the basic housekeeping and fire safety arrangements, can I ask Sarah to do that for me please?
Yes, there's no planned fire drills today, but if the fire alarm does sound, please make your way out of the building and the fire point is at Tudor Square. I'm sure you all know where the toilets are, but they're just outside on the corridors, so that's it, thank you.
And if we can introduce ourselves as councillors, so if we could start with the deputy chair, please, thank you.
I'm Christine Gilligan-Cubo, I'm deputy chair of this committee and I'm a councillor for Hillsborough Ward.
I'm councillor Ruth Mercero, on this committee and representing City Ward.
Hello, my name's Diane Hurst, I'm an elected member for Richmond Ward and member of this committee.
Hi, I'm Craig Gamble-Pew, I'm councillor for East Exeterfield Ward.
I'm councillor Richard Shaw, member of this committee and councillor for Beechfield Greenhall Ward.
I'm councillor Andrew Sanger, I'm councillor for Forward Ward and I'm the group spokesperson on this committee.
Hi, I'm councillor Ian Auckland, I'm councillor for Gravespass Ward.
Thank you ever so much. Can I please request that mobile telephones and other switch equipment switched on to silent mode, please, thank you. Because we don't have any other business on this agenda, because it's an extraordinary meeting that we've called, I know councillor Craig Gamble-Pew wants to raise something that was discussed at their local area committee.
Thanks Chair, just briefly, just to put on record that we've been discussing in our lack, the need to have a review of the policy at the moment which restricts new residence parking schemes outside the city centre. We've got some local need in our ward and others may as well, so through the lack that's been referred and I believe it will be coming to the next meeting, it can't be discussed today because this is an extraordinary meeting, thank you.
Thank you for your contribution councillor, we'll ensure that when we have one of those briefing sessions with members, we'll include it on there and I understand there was a discussion on the work plan, not discussing that today, but we'll ensure it's on the future work plan as well.
Just on lack referrals, so the way, sorry, excuse me councillor, I'm Robert Parkin, Assistant Director and Deputy Monitoring Officer for Law and Governments, just to assist the committee in terms of procedure on lack referrals, the way it works is that the request is forwarded in writing, once an area committee has resolved to make a reference to the chair of the committee, obviously that hasn't happened because we're so close to the meeting of the lack, and then there'll be a decision whether to bring it to the committee, to refer it to a different, to an officer or ask an executive director to respond directly, so it'll come to you Chair and you'll get an opportunity to decide whether it comes to committee or whether there's a bit more engagement, but hopefully that assists.
Thanks ever much for finding this solution for us to get this item discussed as well, thank you. Moving on, item two, any apologies for absence?
Yes Chair, I've got one apology from councillor Julie Groco.
Thank you. Any items, item three exclusion of public and press?
There is none.
None, brilliant. Declarations of interest, any declarations of interest by any member? No. Item five, I don't believe we have any questions or any petition, that's correct, brilliant. Thank you ever so much and now moving on to item six, Traffic Management Act Part Six, application to the Department for Transport to enforce moving traffic offences and it's going to be presented by Matthew and Tom, over to you, thank you.
Good morning, thanks Chair, Matthew Reynolds, Transport Planning and Infrastructure Manager here at Sheffield Council. So the report presented in front of you today has four recommendations, the first one is to note the objections we've received on our consultation on three locations for moving traffic offences, but also the general principle of a designation order which covers the whole of the Sheffield civil enforcement area, which is the administrative boundary. It also approved the enforcement of the three sites, as outlined in the report, approved the enforcement of other potential locations in the future, as outlined in the report, and then delegates the head of Strategic Transport to commence consultation on those aforementioned projects. So the background to this, Traffic Management Act Part Six is for moving traffic offences as the Chair has outlined, this covers designations which have already been granted by the Department for Transport to locations like the Greater London authorities, Cardiff, and through the Phase One designation orders to a number of other local authorities across the country. This is Sheffield's opportunity to draw down these powers and the report recommends that we do so. The bit which I just wanted to kind of draw members' attention to on the basis that I assume that you've written, that you've read the report, is around the consultation exercise which is undertaken, we hosted it on our connect in Sheffield website, we did press releases, we did letters, we did specific councillor engagement in all the locations where these were being proposed, as well as MP involvement as well. We had a response rate of 600 comments received, mainly positive, 75% of respondents said this was the right thing to do. The main reason for support is that these are unlawful criminal movements on the highway network and generally speaking, other drivers are frustrated when other drivers do not abide by the law and I think we can all see why that would be the case. The primary reason for these powers is for road safety, these have been tested through previous traffic regulation orders, it's been unlawful, it's been unsafe and the movement of vehicles in these manner causes risk to all road users who are using the highway at that present time. The other thing which got raised quite significantly through the response was the call for actual additional powers at other locations, whether it's north, south, east or west of the city, there were lots of comments saying, okay, this is great, but how about these other locations? And that is something which is why we've put the designation order to cover all manner of offences which have been outlined by the DFT across the civil enforcement area for the city, so should future rollout of these restrictions be applicable, we can do that. We need to establish a prioritisation system for agreeing those, bringing in local concerns from the local area committees, I assume, and we'll work that through with members of this committee to understand how we take that forward. In terms of against, because I think it's important to see the balanced approach within the consultation, is that a lot of people were kind of wary of the enforcement process, so how will I get a ticket, when will I get a ticket, how can I appeal a ticket? Members need to be made aware that as part of the application of this, we will be developing an appeals process which would be statutory required of the enactment of these powers, similar to civil parking offences and bus lane contraventions, so that will be developed in due course. A lot of members of the public suggested this was a money-making exercise, actually our financial forecasting doesn't demonstrate that, the primary reason for these powers are for road safety and network management implications. There are statutory requirements around what money, what any surplus revenue generated from these schemes can be spent on, which is referred to other transport-related activities, so the economic term is hypothecated, it goes back into funding the administrative functions of the scheme, but also any future rollout, so we can't use this money to spend on general council expenditure, it has to be ring fenced to specific transport functions. There's a number of challenges to existing tiaros, this was not, what I must stress to members, these are all existing restrictions, we're not proposing new restrictions, these restrictions have been tested through previous statutory consultations through the traffic regulation order process. We had a few members of the public want to object to the Traffic Management Act enforcement because they didn't agree with the current traffic regulation order, that is not applicable to this discussion. Signs and lines were raised and let me just reassure members that as part of any application and application, implementation of any camera enforcement, the traffic regulation orders will have to be legally sound, including any associated lining and signing in accordance with Department for Transport guidelines and regulations. So that exercise is being undertaken and they are sound where they're being proposed and if there is any requirement for remarking, relining, re-signing, then obviously we'll pick it up through the implementation prior to enforcement, because that is all required for legal enforcement of those restrictions. We have got letters of support, we've got letters of support from South Yorkshire Police as a local constabulary, this is not in the agenda pack but has been shared with members as we received it after publication. We've also received letters of support from First Stagecoach, TM Travel and Stagecoach Supertram, who operate our public transport services, on the basis that they support the punctuality benefits and reliability that network management can bring from improved network management from great level of enforcement. The Mayor Combined Authority, this morning Mayor Oliver Coppel provided us a letter of support, it arrived this morning as I've just said, focusing on the punctuality and the road safety, the statutory functions of the transport authority. And then we have received two other additional letters of support, again they're in the appendices, one from Cycle Sheffield, supporting these kind of initiatives for great level of enforcement of moving traffic offences as a whole, in respect of their 1900 members signed up to that particular organisation. And we also received a letter of support from Hunters Bar Living Streets, who recognise the benefits that this enforcement can do for school streets and protecting other kind of restrictions which motorists often abuse. So the report also outlines a series of options, we've come to the recommendation, I won't go into them, but I just wanted to make you aware that we have explored other options and we recommend that this is the way to go. So finally Chair, I'd just like to conclude this piece by outlining our recommendation for approval. Road safety is obviously critically important for all highway users, the protection of traffic management restrictions is a benefit for network management principles and it also helps a huge resource implication which is currently laid for by South Yorkshire Police, so on a broader holistic scale, the use of these powers can help our colleagues over at South Yorkshire Police do great levels of enforcement. Scheme design and scheme delivery will be benefited through these powers, obviously the best way to restrict movement is to design it out, but sometimes that's not practical, so great levels of camera enforcement can help with that. And I'd just like to draw members' attention to the opening statement that 75% of people responded to this consultation, 600 which is a huge sample size, at support these principles, so there's an overwhelming public interest in making this happen. And then finally, we are not proposing new restrictions, we are just looking to restrict what is already there, as I've mentioned before, these are unlawful movements, they are criminal movements, which shouldn't be happening on the highway network and this is our way in which we can help protect those particular junctions for future opportunities across the city. So thank you Chair.
Thanks very much Matt, anything from Tom?
I think Matt's covered really everything councillor Igbal, just in terms of some of those kind of issues around the kind of financial aspects of the scheme, clearly subject to the approval of the designation order, then we'll bring back confirmation to the committee which will include issues around monitoring evaluation of the sites that we've highlighted here, which will be the first three in the city for implementation, and that will then cover off some of that future policy around further sites and actually the monitoring around the income and any surplus to potentially reinvest in these initiatives given the high levels of interest.
Thank you Tom, I'll open it for any questions or comments. Take Diane and then councillor Auckland.
Thank you Chair, question first and then I may come back with a comment. Matthew, thank you for this, we're proposing to, if it's approved, to start the process at three areas that have been specifically identified because of danger, will there be a process that sits behind that to say, okay, this has reduced accidents, this has reduced injuries, now we're going to roll it out to, so that we can understand the rationale please?
Yeah, so in terms of the initial selection of the three sites, they were done on accident data, specific accidents, so in the Stats 19 data when an accident is occurred, the police fill out a form and there's specific accident code, so these have been specifically 301 and 305 which relates to unlawful movements leading to an accident. So that's where we started with this and we've also put in where we experience kind of network manager implications, so congestion, but also where public transport routes intersect. So that's what we've done for the first three. What we need to do as the next stage is understand how we then roll that out across the rest of the city. Now, from my perspective, and the DFT is very clear on this and I think this is the right approach, is that we shouldn't be just using cameras to put everywhere, there should be a very, very good reason to use camera enforcement and that's what the DFT specifically asked local authorities to do. So with that in mind, we need to establish a localised prioritisation process as to how we think we should be engaging on these powers, but that's something which should the committee approve this today, we can start working on that.
Thank you, councillor Auckland?
Thank you Chair, so just talk us through what happens to the data that the camera records, where it goes to, who handles it and when it gets deleted. And on the evidence part of things, and you're looking for evidence and talking about road safety, are we going to be specifically linking accident causation with ignoring a banned turn, say? Do we have that level of detail or is accident going to be a sort of a proxy measure for where enforcement takes place? And I will have a comment to make Chair.
Thanks councillor Auckland, so in terms of some of those aspects around kind of data retention and policies associated with how we handle information related to our camera enforcement, it will be, I haven't got the specifics, but we have a policy in place for our bus lane enforcement, bus gate enforcement, clearly we need to handle that data carefully, we have privacy notices on our website that refer to that and data retention policies that manage how long we retain that information for, clearly we don't retain that information for longer than it's required, so it will be related to the timescales associated with potential appeals, associated with any enforcement action that's undertaken. That operational plan will be developed for moving traffic offence enforcement, as Matt highlighted in his presentation, those plans will need to be in place for us to enable and enact a designation that is granted to us, so we will be developing that with parking services and looking at the resources associated with that. In terms of the collision information, the collision information is, again as Matt's highlighted, we have information that the police gather and at the moment we've been looking at those collisions that specifically relate to people abusing banned turns or restrictions that they should have adhered to and didn't, so that is part of the prioritisation already. The further kind of rollout, identifying additional sites, prioritising those sites, we will need to establish a criteria and policy associated with that, so when we have that designation order granted, which we certainly hope will be part of this next tranche of places that the Department for Transport are moving forward with, will bring to confirmation of the designation order and those associated policies and plans for further rollout.
I think the only thing, yeah, thanks Tom, I think the only thing I'd add to that councillor Auckland is, there are particular functions in regard to key infrastructure which are problematic for us, so around the supertram network for example, where you have lots of banned turns which are restricted for specific operational purposes, that might be an element where we kind of, we acknowledge the kind of the risk of the accident and the operational implication of it happening. So that, again, that's a bit of level of detail we probably need to work through in terms of how we take the designations forward, but where identified particular junctions interacting with the supertram where just the risk of a banned movement can have significant consequences, even if it's not necessarily leading to accidents.
Just also to add to that, I think it's important to note whether we have collision, collisions at particular locations related to say the supertram where there's banned prohibited turns, we do always in reviewing that, we won't just move to a point where enforcement will just be the solution, we would always review that on a wider basis as well to see whether there are any further improvements that could be made, engineering improvements, signage etc, to ensure that the risks associated with that are minimised because enforcement isn't a really key part of this, but you know, if people have been abusing those banned restrictions, then we want to try and engineer that up as much as possible, so it will probably be kind of a multifaceted position in terms of reviewing some of those sites.
Chair, if I may clarify, I mean to then, to the extent that these may usually motorists more observant and careful, make me more observant and careful on occasions, it actually has the potential to increase network efficiency and public transport efficiency and tram safety and that would be true in all circumstances, I think I'm right to think that.
Just before I bring in Craig, so I think he's got a question as well, not all collision or accident data is always reported, I mean if you've had an accident, you might, between the two parties agree to settle or whatever it is, so there are places, I mean I can give an example in my own ward where not everybody reports the accident, but as you said, we are going to be looking at how we gather that evidence, so not today, but it'd be good to look at what else, what other measures we use to look how dangerous an area can be. Craig?
Yeah, thank you, I just wondered whether these powers would extend to being able to enforce where we've implemented weight restrictions?
Thanks councillor, these are moving traffic offences, which means they are offences where a vehicle is moving, so not a weighting restriction, a weighting restriction can be covered under a red route through a camera, but these are specifically just for where a vehicle is moving, so ban turn, pedestrian areas, one ways, that sort of thing.
So just to clarify, I know in my ward and other areas of North Sheffield, we've got some areas where there's been problems with heavy goods vehicles coming through, so through the work of officers, which we've really welcomed, we've now got restrictions, we've got with the signage there, but one of the things that we get from residents is they're still seeing these vehicles because there's no, you know, the signage is there but there's no enforcement.
So contravention of a weighting restriction is a moving traffic offence, so that would be included, yeah.
Councillor Shaw?
Thanks Chair, I have a couple of questions, so thank you for the report Matt, in the 75% level of support in the consultation, is that typical of these kinds of consultations? I remember some reports where, you know, support was like 90 odd percent or whatever, so is this average, above average?
So we've never consulted a moving traffic offence before and as you can imagine, it's a very nuanced discussion because it's a new power, I can't provide any, I don't think I can answer that question councillor Shaw, if I'm being completely honest, I think just to give you a little bit more breakdown, the 75% is kind of, you know, the global position on the general question, do you support moving traffic offences? I think in, at the Bramall Lane junction it was 77%, at the Glossop Road up Hanover Street, again it was 77%, the Shales Mallon was about 74%, so we are seeing quite high levels. The other thing is that these kind of discussions, they invoke objection generally speaking, so to get 75% support is actually probably more than what I would be expecting.
I was just going to add, I think one of the things that has been quite noticeable in terms of the consultation that we've undertaken is that we have managed to reach out and receive a significant number of responses, so in some other places that have, some of the places in the first tranche of schemes that got these designated powers, they had, you know, a dozen people responding to their consultations. So I think in terms of the level of input that we've received, it's certainly significant and in terms of that level of support, it's significant within a high number.
Thank you, and my second question, well generally I'm a great believer in devolution and taking the opportunity to, you know, take more powers from Whitehall down to council levels, are there any other powers that are on offer at the moment or is this it? Are there any powers that are available that we've not, that we've decided not to apply for, for instance?
So the only other, so the moving traffic offences has been mentioned in various of the strategic documents from the Department for Transport, so the Bus Back Better which is the bus reform plan and also the gear change which is the push towards more active travel use. The only other kind of powers which have been, have been kind of mentioned in those reports is pavement parking ban, to which we have provided a response to the department, we have not had anything yet on the pavement parking ban, I think, if I'm just, I'm trying to go off the top of my head now, I think that was after the original consultation on Traffic Management Act, so that might be on its way, but that's a question we can take back to our discussions with the department when we next have them, but they are the only two to my knowledge for local highway authorities.
And finally just as a supplementary, and these offers of extra powers, are these offers time limited?
So this one is time limited, I think Appendix F of the report, I've not got it in front of me because my computer's dead, but I think it's Appendix F, there's a letter there from the Department for Transport advising local authorities that Tranche Two will cease on the, I think it's the 10th of February, don't quote me on that, check the report, and that's for us to submit our application should committee decide that's the right thing to do, and in that letter it mentioned there is no Tranche Three date as yet, so you can read into that how you will.
Thank you. Councillor Sanger?
Thank you Chair, I mean in my 56 years, I've only been the victim of, in one road traffic collision and that was at the junction of Queen's Road and Bramall Lane, so really pleased to see that that was in the top three we're talking about here. So I think these three sites are ones which I think most Sheffield residents would say, you know, something needs to be done about restricted movements and people illegally using the yellow box. So I think it's really about pursuing the question that councillor Hurst said about the wider list and particularly picking up your point about supertram, because I would have thought the tram junctions are an area where there's a big safety risk if motorists act in an illegal manner. So when it comes to prioritising the next list, I mean how big is the next list? Because you've already said in one of your answers that DFT don't want camera enforcement for everything, so how big is the next? So how big is the next list? Because these three sites, I think, I say, everybody thinks that these are a good three. But how many more are potentially on the list? And how many do you see coming forward for approval, you know, in a reasonable timescale? Thanks Chair.
If I could just add a supplementary to that. For me, it's the point about local area committees, which we've discussed a number of times and it's under, as part of the governance review. For me, I would like to build in a mechanism before it arrives here that local area committees at least have an opportunity to have their say and then it's fed back to this TRC committee.
Thanks Chair, thanks councillor Sandor. I think the honest answer to that is that we haven't done any more work on where the locations are. We started off when we were designing the three to be submitted, we had a long list of sites where these particular contraventions were happening and causing accidents. Some of them were clearly more engineering focused, so a camera wouldn't probably make any difference. So that's something which we probably need to go back to. And I think the other question there is that we are, we need to understand what the true financial implications are of this are. So at the moment, we've got an idea of an allocation for next year to get these sites up and running. We need to understand what the capital investment requirements are and what the revenue implications are. And then we also need to tie that, and I would be arguing, we need to tie that into a wider strategy about how we're going to be doing this across other bits which we can be enforcing already. So things like bus gate cameras, for example, how it ties into that process. So in short, I think it's something for this committee to determine, councillor Sandor, if that's okay.
Brilliant, thanks ever so much. Comments? I've got councillor Hurst first.
Yes, thank you Chair. This is a very informal comment because I was still reading through the appendices of the report because I didn't get through all the pages in advance of the meeting. But I do welcome this proposal. This is very much about improving the safety of our highways and starting with worst first, which is an approach we normally take. And I would welcome, going forwards, looking at how we develop that policy so it ties into other areas and just makes our streets safer for walking, safer for cycling, just a safer environment to be in. And I do anticipate that, I liked what I read in the report when it said, warn first in the first six months. So then it's learning, it's education. It's not about, you can't say, oh, they just have to make money. It's about educating people about what they can do and what they can't do safely and then reinvesting, if people are so silly as to conduct an offence when they've had a warning, reinvesting that in making the rest of our network safer. And I will be supporting this, thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Hurst, councillor Auckland?
Thank you Chair. Really, I seem to remember signing a letter to indicate cross-party support to the DFT for this about more than a decade ago. So it's only been a long time, a long time coming. So I'm pleased to see it's arrived and from my, yes, sorry. From my point of view, it's much to be welcomed. I certainly agree. I mean, it is one of these rare consultation things where, instead of everybody having a slightly different opinion on a traffic proposal, there is a wide body of opinion in favour of this. And honestly, I don't know about anyone else, but the number of times I've had constituents say to me, if only you would stick a camera up there, that would solve everything. And I suspect, honestly, this is going to be one, I can start to write a list out now for my ward where people are desperate for, you know, desperate to see the...
I resisted doing that Ian.
These in first, yeah, exactly. We all could, I'm sure. So, yeah, I think this is a move in the right direction. It will improve safety, it will make us all more aware. It can actually improve how the network runs because you can design it as well as you like. But if people then don't try and follow the clues on the road, it doesn't work and it causes congestion for everybody. So I particularly take note of England sixteen. It is proposed that the council takes a pragmatic approach. I do hope that will apply when it does come to enforcement and appeals. There will be an appeal to the traffic tribunal for bus lane enforcement and yellow line and all the rest of it outside London, something I served in a long time ago. And sometimes, sometimes, I've got to say, we have a tendency to try and fix a problem that doesn't exist and that can get us into trouble. So I hope it's pragmatic when it comes to, and evidence based when we choose to the sites. But that also takes in local concerns through the LAX. And that also, that with a six month warning period, I mean, that's a pretty generous... I was thinking, there's got to be a warning period, but, I mean, that's a pretty generous warning period really. So, thanks Chair.
Councillor Pugh?
Hi, yeah, thank you. Yeah, I welcome this move. Thank you to officers for all the work that's been done. The report is really detailed and certainly, I think in all of our experience, this is something that we've been crying out for, for, as Ian said, for decades. And I don't, it's not one-upmanship, but I'll take councillor Auckland's signing of his letter a decade ago. In nineteen ninety eight, I lived off upper Hanover Street as a young student radical and we regularly set up community breakfasts to block traffic running through Broom Hall to the applause of many and the indignation of a minority. So I absolutely, I absolutely welcome this and I shall be getting on with my ward colleagues and no doubt making the same list as everybody else. Thank you Chair.
If I can, anybody else for comments? No? If I can just also thank the officers for turning this round very quickly. I know we were trying to pencil something in a couple of times over the last couple of months. So thank you to the team for making this happen. I'd also like to thank the residents that were for and against. It's important that everybody has an opportunity to have their say. And I'd also like to thank the letters of support that we've also received from the various stakeholders. So a good piece of work here, as a number of us have said, it's going to make, hopefully, keep traffic flowing, buses, especially when they do turn up, and parking as well. So welcome this. So if we can take it to the colleagues in favour of the recommendations? Agreed, thanks ever so much. Moving on to item seven, task and finish group for decarbonisation roadmap. And that's over to Mark, if you could introduce yourself as well, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. I'm Mark Whitworth, I'm Service Manager for Sustainability and Climate Change. This report and the associated papers that I'm presenting today is seeking the approval to establish a task and finish group to help oversee the development of the decarbonisation route maps. As you all recall, we updated the committee in November on the progress that has been made on the development of the route maps. And then following that discussion in November, we had a further knowledge briefing with the committee in December where the suggestion of developing task and finish group was first discussed with the members in attendance. The scope and the potential complexity of the policy interventions and the associated actions which were set out in the route maps is significant. And so it's important that appropriate time is set aside for members of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee to consider the context and the options and to help advise officers on the future priorities to develop the route maps and also in terms of our overall progress towards our target of becoming net zero by twenty thirty. So the paper in front of me today seeks the approval for establishing a task and finish group. The council's constitution sets out the process for establishing task and finish groups. And it's proposed that the membership for that group is brought from within the Transport and Regeneration Committee. And it also sets out within the paper the number of members that are anticipated to be on the group. And also sets out the programme around proposed timetable for holding the group meetings approximately five times on a fortnightly basis and to meet for, in the order of three hours on each of those sessions. It also sets out within the paper the five areas that we're currently proposing to explore within those task and finish groups. The first area looking at introduction, engagement and citywide, city level vision. The second one looking specifically at transport decarbonisation and obviously the roadmap that's currently in development alongside a session on the city council's decarbonisation, which is a subject of the other roadmap in development. And then also picking up wider roadmap, cross-cutting issues and then a session on member options and review and recap. And the timetable for doing this is going to be, as I say, over a period where these meetings are held every two weeks. And we'll be looking to try and bring the discussion from that back to the committee in June with the completed route maps. So I'll stop there for questions and then if there are other points as well around the other papers that have been included in the pack, which includes the draft terms of reference along with a notification to include this on the committee work programme.
Thank you, Mark. On page seventeen, membership and attendance, on two point one, I'd like to recommend that we have six elected members on this task and finish group. It says two from the Labour Party, two from the Liberal Democrats, and it says one from the Greens. I'd like to have two members from the Green Party. I think equity is important. So it's a recommendation that I'll be putting forward. Would also like to include substitute members within there. So it gives us the scope to ensure that we do have representatives. And the third one is around, if we could ask members to respond to Mark by the twenty seventh, which is next Friday, gives us enough time to agree the members coming forward. And the final bit I'd like to mention is, there was a conference which had taken place, I think it was organised by Sheffield Partnership, First Partnership last year, very well attended. And at some point, we'd like to also involve a number of those stakeholders in this piece of work. Because it's not just about the city council, it's about addressing the issue across the city. And there'll be a number of key institutions and stakeholders that would also, could help contribute for us to deliver our city ambition. So if colleagues have got any, sorry, if colleagues can think about that, can we take any questions, any questions on this? No? So we've got the recommendations in front of us and I've just put those three. If I could get somebody to second that, that'd be great. Take Chris, thank you. And then if we can move to a vote, is everybody in favour? Brilliant, thank you ever so much. And that concludes today's meeting, thank you.